All right. Good evening. We convening the Board of Supervisors regular meeting for January 5th. And we go right into the public hearing period of the agenda. Special exception 21-10-02.
Ms. Summers will provide a brief introduction, and the applicants here might have some words they want to share with you, and then you can hear from the public.
Thank you. Mr. Smith is proposing to operate two tent sites at their vineyards pursuant to 1703060 and 17065F. They propose to offer two primitive campsites at their winery, which would offer simply a picnic table and a campfire ring. Each site would be accessed by a trail from the winery. VDOT has commented that existing entrance meets the VDOT private entrance standard. And if they, in the future, wish to expand, they would need to re-sign it for a VDOT review. The Health Department commented that since only two campsites are being offered, this does not fall under the definition of a campground for them. It would not be subject to the rules and regulations governing campgrounds. The site is, however, subject to sewage channeling and disposal regulations and the private well regulations. The Planning Commission held their preliminary review on October 20th and decided to hold a public hearing, which they held on November 17th. They recommended approval of this application with conditions. One, campsites to be located at the rear of the property, not visible from the Williams' property. Two campsites with two campers per site that permit to be valid for one year, and the campsites to be served by a portage on. And if the board has any questions for the applicants, they are present.
If the board doesn't have any questions, then Ms. Summers, right now, might be appropriate for the applicant to provide any additional information if they would like. And if not, you can open the public hearing, which, on note, was properly advertised as required by the Code of Virginia.
I'd just like to make one comment. I would like to get approval, but I think some of the restrictions on, proposed by the previous commission were a little strict and might be detrimental to the view, which is having portages.
Besides portages, what else bothered you?
I think a one-year restriction is pretty short. If we have to apply every year, that can be kind of expensive. And then, I guess that would be it. Whatever, I mean, the fewer the restrictions, the better. But I'm happy with whatever you all decide.
Thanks for hanging in there. I know that you've kind of been put through the wringer on what seemed like a simple process, but thanks for being patient.
Thank you.
All right. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the courtroom that would like to speak, please come up, state your name and your district. Seeing none, is there anybody on? We do have...
Mr. Fraser, Ms. Kreider is with one of the papers, but she might want to say something.
Okay. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak? Not seeing any Zoom hands. I will close the public hearing portion and open it up to the supervisors. With this being in Wakefield, my... Two campsites seem very simple. You've been in the county a few years anyway, and you know that things can start one way and grow. Obviously, there's more restrictions if you wanted to get more campsites. I'm just wondering, if we left the conditions, would this even warrant the effort to have the two campsites? I think you mentioned in the Planning Commission meeting that it's like $40 a weekend or something?
The campsites should make around $10,000 a year.
Each one?
Individually. I mean, together.
Okay.
The two campsites should make around $10,000.
Based on past experience?
Yeah.
So if these regulations, if we, if the conditions stuck, you would still feel like it was worth your time with the porta potties and...
Yes.
Okay. I did speak with Mr. Williams at his request, and when I looked from his backyard to your property, I had actually not been to the winery for tasting, I was surprised at how close your tasting is to his property line. I know that's not about that, but we're talking tonight about neighbors helping neighbors, and my concern is the impact to your neighbors. If you have automobiles coming in at whatever, there's no time limit on cars coming and going, there's not a limit on how many cars. So that's, I'm concerned about taking care of neighbors.
And we're also concerned, and we're willing to do, you know, whatever the Williams, you know, want to minimize the impact to their view. And just as a background, the only reason the buildings are close to their property now are historical. My grandpa installed a septic tank 25 years ago where that building is today, and so we connected it to an existing tank. So we will, we can, you know, obscure, you know, the view as much as the Williams want, and we're willing to do, you know, whatever we can to be a good neighbor.
Okay. I'm going to open it up. Those were my main concerns.
So serving on the Planning Commission last year, when you brought the application forward, I was the only one who voted no, but I did add the caveat that I reserve the right to change my mind, since you're going to come to our local governing body anyway for a special exception permit review and possible approval. And so I have changed my mind, and I just wanted to state for the record that when I voted no, I was really, in retrospect, I was voting no because I do have a broader concern about farm wineries and operative language within state code that basically allows for virtually unrestricted customary uses that might or might not be related to the core agricultural activity that's occurring, or core wine-related activity that's occurring at a farm winery, or the core agricultural activity that's occurring at a non-winery agritourism business. And I think we've seen examples in the county where our citizens have been unfairly adversely affected by activities that have virtually no connection at all to whatever agricultural activity is going on on that property. We have an 18-hole Frisbee Golf Course, which I had mentioned during the Planning Commission meeting, and I have to say that that's been weighing on me because I get a lot of complaints from the people who live around that property. But as it turns out, you're, you are trying to get two primitive campsites approved within, within provisions in our own zoning ordinance. So in other words, you've been forced to go an extra step that other agritourism or farm winery businesses wouldn't have to go through with respect to customary uses, where they wouldn't have to seek any permit at all. And so I'm, having thought about it more, I'm comfortable with this. I think the porta potty condition is something that I really didn't think was a good idea from the Planning Commission, because if we're, if we're hoping that you'll not have a significant effect on your neighbors, I don't think sticking porta potties on a property helps in that regard. And then finally, it didn't, I didn't know until the Planning Commission meeting that, in fact, you had been operating campsites prior to seeking a permit. And I understand you've resolved all of that with the Commissioner of Revenue, but the more important point there is during that year, or however long you were operating those campsites, it's not apparent to me, anyway, that the Williamses ever had a problem. So I support your application. I suggest that we remove the porta potty, porta potty condition. And I also agree with you that we're, we're not doing a favor for a small business by having you come back a year later. And so I'd like to remove that condition, but want to hear from my colleagues to see if they agree and how we might adjust that. Thank you.
I have to say, I think you all know how I feel about farm wineries, and I fully support agriculture, but like most of you, I think I wrestle with the leeway that the state has, the Commonwealth has given farm wineries and farm breweries. They have claimed a lot of territory that, in my opinion, should belong to the county. And I really think it's come to a point where we need to seek some official opinions on this, whether we do this through different state officers. I think, you know, we allow, you know, a special tax rate, and we encourage agriculture in the county under the idea that it will not only feed our people and be a traditional way of life that we should encourage, but that also it will keep the county beautiful. And I don't think people coming and going camping and having porta potties and everything else is keeping the county beautiful. There are several caveats that we would have on this, on this property. If this was an Airbnb, we wouldn't insist on screening for parking areas and things like that. We would worry about the neighbor's view. I don't see any of that in this application. We would also be concerned about people's ability to contact someone in the case of an emergency, and that they have emergency first aid kits and those sorts of things at their disposal. I don't see anything like that in this application. So we seem to, although it is an inherently more dangerous exercise than just renting an Airbnb, have put actually laxer, more lax restrictions in place than we would on Airbnb rental. I also believe that if you're asking me to choose between a porta potty, staying a porta potty, or having people use the great outdoors as their toilet, that's not a great choice, and I don't particularly want to make that choice. I think saying no is okay. There are lots of opportunities for farm wineries to make money in different ways under the provisions the state allows them currently, and we should encourage them to do so. But I am not at all sure that encouraging campering on wineries is, is, is good practice, especially in, in light of the fact that many farm wineries and breweries then put on music and festivals and encourage camping, and it becomes a real imposition on neighboring landowners. We get most of our money in this county from our property taxes, and we should be working with folks to make sure we keep their property values high. Preserving the quiet life that they live here and stay here for.
Mr. Fraser?
Currently muted, sir.
Sorry about that. I was muted myself because of the dogs in the background.
We've all been there.
Twenty times, yeah, we have, actually.
I have to inject a little bit of humor along, or it just gets monotonous. Okay, might I understand that there are bathroom facilities nearby that they wouldn't have to use the porta potty or the bushes?
That's correct. And it, it's tied into, as Mr. Smith was saying, it's, it's a real bathroom. I used it.
Do we know the distance?
So it's, I would say the only, having walked the property, I would say the only disadvantage, as he just pointed out, is his grandfather placed a septic tank in a part of the property that's closer to the Williamses than, you know, maybe is ideal, which I think is what certain members of the Planning Commission had in mind when they came up with this porta potty concept, which is so people wouldn't be walking to the bathrooms closer to the neighbor. But yeah, there is a very decent, clean, nice, warm bathroom restroom.
To be clear, though, the Health Department suggested, based on the capacity of that system, that it be limited to two campsites and two guests per site. And that would be a condition that I would strongly recommend the board place. Otherwise, the applicant would, would be then in a position for enforcement with Health Department, which is not something you would want to...
So what is, what is the condition you just stated?
Two campsites, two guests per site. And that's based on Health Department review and analysis of the current system.
So say we get a call on a Friday night that there's more people than there should be at the campground. What happens?
That's a good question.
Enforcement is, is difficult. It depends on if there's photographic information provided of multiple people as opposed to two people, that's something that could, could be used. Generally, enforcement, and I'm speaking for Michelle here, is a tiered approach, and there'll be, you know, a nice letter, and the nice letter is followed by a less-nice letter, which is followed by a summons. And we would have, we would be charged with gathering evidence that would stand up in court. And that can be tricky on a Friday night.
In the dark.
And that's where, that's where...
I guess another question I have, if this is permitted, how long does it take before this turns into an 18-hole Frisbee Golf Course? Because we don't seem to be able to stop one, how can we stop the second one?
Yeah.
Those are of agriculture.
Right. And I think, I think, Mr. Fraser, it's a really good question. And what I was trying to articulate earlier is if you go into 17065 of our zoning ordinance, what, what gives me some reassurance here with respect to this use is there, there are seven, there are seven additional standards for a tent campground, plus any other restrictions that we might place as part of the application. Whereas an agritourism business engaged in a quote-unquote customary use, customary to an agricultural activity, would never even have to come before us. So I feel like, you know, certainly somebody could, this applicant or any other farm winery owner could try to engage in a customary use tied to whatever their core agricultural activity is. But I think we're all pretty sensitive to that, and certainly with the Frisbee Golf Course, I'm, I'm working on what we can do about that. But here, it's a, it's a tent campground with seven standards for such a campground in our zoning ordinance. So I feel like they're having, they're really having to run the gauntlet of our own zoning ordinance, and it's, and that ordinance, of course, is there for a reason. So I just say that because, I mean, I think this is, this is actually good, that we have an applicant here with a farm winery who, by virtue of our zoning ordinance, has been forced to come before both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. So it's an opportunity for us to, if we decide to approve it, at least to make sure that we're all comfortable with how it's going to go forward. But I don't, I don't know what the limit of our, of our condition should be, and I guess that's where we are in the discussion.
Well, if I could go back a minute or two, how close are those bathrooms to the, the adjacent landowners?
135 feet.
135 feet, you said?
About 450 feet from their house.
450, right. The Williamses have a very deep lot. So, yeah, 100, you said 135 from the lot line and 400 feet from their dwelling.
Then a similar question, how far are the campsites from the bathrooms? I think that's a pretty decent distance, isn't it?
If the restriction on being out of the line of view of the Williams is the operative restriction...
Could you approach the microphones so Mr. Fraser can hear you?
I'm John Smith. Max's father and the owner of the property. I did. I think it would be about an additional 600 feet, which would be the, the first permissible location that would be out of the view of the Williams site. So in other words, from their property line, it'd be 550 feet, and from, I'm sorry, 750 feet, and from the bathroom, it would be 600 feet, approximately. I'm not sure that I've marked that off.
Mr. Curry's got it pulled up.
I'm just, I'm just at a loss myself why it would be less invasive to the neighbors to see a septic tank truck come in occasionally and clean those things out than it would be to just have, use an existing facility.
So is this area that I'm circling on the screen, the building and bathroom?
Yes. That's a sort of your view of the actual park.
Got it. And the...
The, yeah, so the first, the first place that would be out of view of the Williams line of sight would be right there. So it'd be, and that area's there. That's about seven, I think that's about 750 feet. Their property, their, their house is there. That's 190 feet that way and about 500 and something.
Mr. Fraser, sorry, could you repeat your last point? I didn't quite catch it.
Oh, I just, I just don't understand with bathroom facilities that far from a neighboring property, why they would, the Planning Commission members thought it was a good idea to have septic tank trucks come in out there to, to deliver and then clean those trucks, those tanks periodically.
Oh, you mean the porta potties?
Yeah.
I think the, again, I didn't agree with that condition. My recollection is the logic was that because, now we understand, the septic tank, the location of the septic tank drove the location of the bathroom, and certain members of Planning Commission were concerned that if the campsites are located out of the line of sight of the Williamses, and people were walking to the bathroom at night, it would effectively still be a disturbance to the Williams, and thus concluded that the location of porta potties adjacent to the two tent campsites would, would limit this disruption. So that was logic, and I didn't agree with it. And I don't like the idea of porta potties there.
Sorry, Mr. Woodson. If I remember correctly, it was also the concern of the distance at night, people would be driving their car instead of walking.
Right.
So you've got the lights from the car going into the Williamses' property. I think that was part of it as well.
Yep.
I don't know why they can't walk that far.
They can.
They're coming from the city, Mr. Fraser.
It's not whether they can, it's whether they will.
We ultimately can't control human behavior, but we certainly seem like we're trying to, to make it right.
How long has this campsite been on hip camp?
A year, or since, a year since the last meeting, so.
So how many times do you think that you've rented it out?
Hundred.
And have you observed the same principles that you're applying here now with, which is two sites with two people at each site?
No, I originally listed it as two sites with up to four people.
And what's the most you've ever gotten?
People? Eight people.
Have you guys ever had any, have you had any personally, any issues? You have history renting it out, so...
I've never had an issue.
Did the, did, did you, in that year that you were advertising on hip camp, did you ever receive any complaints from the Williamses?
No, never.
And did you, in terms of use of the bathroom, were people driving to use the bathroom at night?
You wouldn't know.
You wouldn't know, you weren't there.
I do not use the bathroom.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I think people generally also don't use their bathroom at night.
You live on the site? I don't remember.
No.
So there's nobody that's a property affiliated with the property on premises?
Correct.
I wanted to follow up on the conversation regarding enforcement, and that's one reason why you might consider a sunset time limit for the permit. You know that the code does have a revocation process, and this board has used that on other special exceptions. But, you know, that's a little bit more difficult to get the evidence that would be necessary to go through the process and sustain court challenge. Whereas if you have a sunset date, then there's really a pressure on the applicant and then permit holder to make sure they are following what they suggested they will do, because they know they will have to be before you again, and will be measured against those conditions if they want to be, to renew. And of course, if it didn't work out for them for the first couple of years, then they might not come back. But if it did, then they know they need to really pay attention to what those conditions say, so that there aren't complaints, because it doesn't have to be evidence at that time, it just has to be complaints and plausible complaints that there are issues.
The part that is just frustrating for you, I'm sure, and it is for me as well, is we are looking at this as the what could go wrong because of things that have happened in our two years on the board, or four years on the board, that we've seen. And so you're being held to a bit of that level of scrutiny, because we don't want to go through that ever again, as far as I'm concerned. However, based on what is in our code and what the Planning Commission said, I have a very hard time not, or to deny it, because I think, one, you've been doing it for a year, thank you for making up with the Commissioner of Revenue, but you're trying to do the right thing that we are actually asking you to do. So in my mind, if we can put a sunset date, personally, I like the porta potties, because I think what Ms. Smith has said is true. If they're not walking 700 feet to the bathrooms, they're using the great outdoors. So I don't know if that's ever caused a problem for you when you go to look at the sites after people leave, but that could be nasty. So I don't necessarily have a problem with the porta potties, and I like the sunset date. Two campers per site, it's pretty minimal, so that's where I am right now.
And there is already a porta potty on site for other reasons?
Where I come about from this is that you guys are operating a business that's by right there that allows people to come in at 1:30 at night and drink, which they don't. But ABC allows you to be up until 2:00 AM. Like my colleague, Mr. Woodson, said here, there are some large leeways and some, some, there's large wiggle room sometimes with these wineries. I have been to the site, I've visited, and I looked in where they were proposing to put these campsites, which are well away from the property line at the front. And to your point, Ms. Smith, there is currently a porta potty there, sort of closer to the vineyard?
Down on the left as you come in the driveway.
And do you feel like that could suffice? Would that be available to, to folks?
I could make a porta potty available, too.
I'm thinking functionally to ask somebody, and I, because I saw where the sites are, I have a farm winery and I have porta potties there, to get somebody to go all the way back in that field regularly to clean them might be very difficult.
The porta potty is further away from the sites than the bathroom is, if I remember correctly.
The porta potty is...
So it would need to be moved back near the campsites.
I just think it could be onerous to ask them to go all the way back. You might not be able to clean them effectively.
It would make things more difficult, yeah.
Because there's no red.
All weather access.
What's that?
All weather access.
Yeah, well, all weather, and it's important to clean them, because, I mean, you need to have them, so that would be, those are my thoughts.
I do want to state for the record, as noted in the narrative posted to Board docs, that a couple important code sections that we have in the zoning ordinance, 17047C, which makes clear that uses that, which would normally not be allowed in a particular zoning district, may be allowed by special permit or special exception, special exception in this case, because they impose conditions or restrictions on the use in order to make compatible with by-right use in the zoning district. So not all sites are acceptable, but some sites with the right conditions might be acceptable. And then 17047G, a special permit or special exception will only be granted if the applicant can satisfy the requirements of Article 6 of the zoning ordinance, and the proposed use is otherwise lawfully permitted, the burden's on the applicant to satisfy such requirements. I just want to make sure everybody's clear. In approving a special exception, then, you would be looking at those conditions that Mr. Woodson pointed out in 17065F.
Mr. Woodson pointed out in 17065 F, that was pulled up earlier, as well as 17052, which are general conditions.
Madam Chair, just to move this along, I do think it's, it's great that we're having an opportunity to actually hear an application for what amounts to a customary use for an agritourism business, which is a luxury we have not been afforded in other cases in the county in recent years. And to move this along, I will put forward a motion that we approve this special exception permit, SC number 21-10-02, tax map 1420C, for a tent campground, two sites with the following conditions, two, two persons per site, and a two-year sunset on the application. So it's all about twos. Two sites, two people per site, and two-year sunset.
In '22.
And there was a recommendation by the planning commission relative to outdoor fires being enclosed in a fire ring?
Yeah.
That was a staff condition, I think that.
Yeah, first, yeah, I'll add that. And notably, I'm removing the porta potty condition.
You're the only one with porta potties at the moment? Actually, we have a motion before I have a question. I'll second for discussion. What's your situation as far as usage, and how often you have to have it pumped?
Once a week. They overflow. We're...
Obviously, quite a bit busier than...
Yeah, we do have a brewery, which leads to using them, yeah. And more than four people. Right, exactly.
Do you believe what Mr. Frazier said, and you concurred with trying to get a truck to the porta jones over by the campsite, might be next to impossible, or lead to a mess in a snowy situation?
Is there, there's been multiple mentions of the location of the campsites. There's no condition proposed to limit the location of these tent sites?
It was just supposed to be a not visible.
But you could add that, not visible, or something.
Oh, that should be not visible by the Williamses.
This is the map in the application, which puts it way to the rear. But you could align it with the map in the application, you can use whatever words to identify how you want.
I would just, yeah, thank you. I, I feel like we've beaten that dead horse, and I think it's, you know, almost a common understanding that we don't want the Williamses to see the site, so let's just use layman's terms and say, out of sight of the neighbors, toward the back of the property. But a reminder that the tent campground standards in the zoning ordinance do specify a setback from the property line, so.
How many feet back from the property line is the area on the map? Is that about 700 feet back?
I think that's what you said.
We haven't heard anything from the other neighbors.
No.
1,200 feet? If that's about the right, the same area that's shown here.
Yep.
I would just say out of, out of sight of the Williamses, while complying with all the, or the operative setback requirement in 170, what is it, 65?
65 F.
17065, yeah, so while still meeting the setback requirement in 17065 F.
They will have to meet all of those items, and if you want to reference the sec...
F5 and all additional standards for a tent campground.
I'll second the amended motion. Any further discussion?
I just think that we should consider that it's not just line of sight, it's also earshot. We all have heard from folks in public hearings that sound travels strangely in Rappahanna County, sometimes in the valleys and hills, things will carry more than you think they will, or less than you think they will. And I would urge us to be specific about the placement of these sites, and to include that they be in the indicated area on the map, so they are as far removed as possible.
So why don't we just ask you, based on our discussion with the planning commission, and sort of your, in your mind's eye, where these would go to not disturb the Williamses, how would you describe the location in a way that we could turn that into a, into a...
Is this the proposed location?
I think that's the second site, isn't it? There's one that's closer.
We're just, yeah, we just want to articulate what the expectation is.
I think in the, like, you've pointed out, in the county zoning, there's restrictions on how far away they should be from neighbors, and I think we should follow the standards set in the county code. And right now, we're far exceeding the county code to be, you know, courteous to our neighbors, and putting them over 10 times as far away from the neighbors as the county code prescribes.
So I would just, I would say as far to the rear of the property, we'll still, we'll still meet in, basically, we're just trying to say where the site should go, and as specifically as we can, which is at the back of the property, but still off the property line.
Mrs. Summers has a printout of this plat, and you can mark it with a circle or an X.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out how we describe it, so that we all have the same expectation, that's all.
My point is you don't have to use words, you can use that map. It can be annotated, and it can be part of your motion.
And the sites you're operating on hip camp, before going through this process, were located where?
They're located in this back third of the property.
Okay. All right, with no complaints, right?
Are you like, blue?
Sure. I mean, it's written.
Yeah, is that the location, or is it broader than that?
I mean, where it's written is that...
The campsites are movable, they're, tent campsites are a panic, it's not like a permanent fixture.
And like a chicken coop, it allows you to move it around, not overburden the land.
Not overburden the land.
Well, we can, we can specifically address the fire rings. Where do you want the, the fire rings we're talking about here? I'm assuming those are corrugated fire rings that are bigger, not easy, as easy to move.
They're pretty, they're, you know, maybe three feet.
And so when fires are built, they will be built in those fireworks, not outside. So where will those fire rings go?
The fire rings are also movable, but I can mark, you know, a location on the map, if that helps, sure.
I think when you pointed over here, the tree that you can see right there was a site.
Yes.
And then there was another one on the other side of the tree line.
Yes, correct.
So you kind of make that a box, is what I'm seeing from...
Go ahead.
May I, Devin, may I answer your question by confirming that this is the end of the line of sight? This is a slight ridge here.
Okay.
This is a high point here. If you're at the very edge of the Williams property, if you're, you know, still on our property, Van, you were just out there once. You're not seeing anything to the north of that tree.
Okay.
And in addition to that, not to make it more complicated, this is a, this is a high point on the property, relative high point on the property, you're also not seeing anything in the line of, sort of the diagonal line that goes down like that. Unless, unless you're all the way up at John Henry's, where you have a slope going back up to a high point. So if you're at the Williams, you can see that triangle.
Yeah.
You can see that tetrahedron, but you can't see anything in the valley, and you can't see anything north.
So how about, let me ask you this, if we're, what is that?
That, that tree.
Okay, so could we just...
That's what I was thinking, Mr. Woodson.
To the east of this tree line, and to the north of that tree, like basically?
I'd say to the north of that tree.
Okay, so basically, to the east of this tree line, and then to the north of the extension of this tree line.
It could be back here as well, that's where it's marked on the map.
All of that is invisible to the Williams. There's a tree line there, those are relatively, called hardwoods, and in the winter, when Van and we were standing up there, in a tiny...
Sorry, I switched.
Oh, sorry.
When Van and we were standing up on this hill, you could see a little window, you could see sort of through the tree line, you could just make out the campsite, but Williams could not see that, if I'm not sure.
So could we just, could we just say, anywhere beyond the extension of that, of that tree line?
That's what I think.
Okay, then that, then that tree.
That's what I think. Well done, sir.
Something like that?
Yep.
Yes.
For Mr. Frazier's benefit? Anything up here?
Yep. So you're mending your motion to add that drawing?
Yep.
I'm second that amendment.
Mr. Frazier, are you clear on the area in question?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, I, I could ask you to repeat everything that Woodson...
We expect you to always use that one liner, it's your signature.
Any other discussion?
Since there's fires on site, is there a fire extinguisher? I mean, we would make that stipulation on any Airbnb that we would have.
It's a privileged campsite, it wouldn't have fireworks.
If I understand it correctly, Airbnbs are under the regulations they are, because they're buildings, houses, and people. The fire department, the fire marshals, everybody has code for homes, not necessarily your yard. So I don't know, I mean, it may make sense to have one somewhere, but nobody's going to be there to run the fire extinguisher.
Do you have water on that part of the property?
We have water on the property.
On that part of the property?
We have a well on the property, and we can provide jugs of water.
Or at least let, let your campers, I assume, as part of hip camp, or however else you mark it as, you have rules and...
You could recommend bringing one.
I mean, you tell them how, like, where they can get water if they need to, right?
I can move our water power to each campsite.
I, I would. I mean, obviously, the owner has a vested interest in not having his property burned down, as does the entire community. I can go in my backyard and have many times, and had a fire without a fire ring, so.
We just normally call the dispatch and say, we're going to light a fire?
Yeah, and I know, I know for tourist home applications, we just have required fire rings, where they have outdoor, like an outdoor fire area, so.
I'd like to go ahead and get a vote if everybody's, do we need a...
Just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Review it.
Two sites, two people per site, two-year sunset, two-year permit period, fire rings and all fires, and to be conducted within those rings, meeting the requirements of 17065 F, and located as shown on what I've called Exhibit A, and marked as Exhibit A, which is basically the area north of this white line.
Yep.
I really think we ought to keep a tight grip on these things, and I would be much more comfortable with a year. But if you all feel like it should be two.
Yeah, I mean, I, your point's well taken, I just, I think we got to let people run with it, and the fact that he operated a year without any complaint gives me a little bit of reassurance.
And he went back and corrected it.
And, and this is going to be less intensive than what he was doing for a year, so.
It's just easier to review than to enforce.
All right, I'm gonna take a vote, I guess. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the litany that Mr. Curry just gave us, the details, say aye?
Aye.
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 And opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Happy campus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here be neighbors.
Can we just have a follow-up discussion on that? Because I do think this farm brewery and farm winery sort of waves in the wind all the things that are allowed under the, the language that the Commonwealth has for us. And I really think we need to dig into that, and what, what is customary use? I feel like we need to maybe appeal, I know you work closely with State Senator Obenshane's office on some things, you know, to our state representatives, to find guidance on what really those things are, so we can enforce things that don't fit the definition, and, and really get on the right side of this thing.
Yeah, totally agree, and Mr. Curry might be able to help me here, but I'm part of the Berkeley Group diagnostic review of our, our zoning subdivision ordinance, I think that will be part of it, because clearly, these, these broad state provisions are increasingly becoming a problem. And I know I've singled out one property owner over Frisbee Golf, but I, I've seen other instances of things that are wholly illogical, and really have no, no causal relationship with whatever activities going on. So I think from a planning commission perspective, this has to be a priority, and so we have to bring our zoning ordinance, to the extent possible, into line with state code, and then determine within the law how much more restrictive we can make our zoning ordinance.
I think a big part of the issue is that, and we've discussed this as a board before, a lot of the leeway that the Commonwealth has allowed seems to make every farm brewery and farm winery sort of a by right event center, which I, I think not, I don't think any of us want.
Right.
I could be wrong.
I think it's mainly limited to farm winery, and I 100% agree with you. Farm breweries do not have the same privilege. It's really farm winery. And I think it's a deep rabbit hole that I've been thinking about for years, and I've brought it up with different members of the board, that we need to look at it. Albemarle has a long history of court cases and best practices now that they use to try and kind of, because the spirit of the law was to help people stay on their, their property, and to use it for an agricultural purpose.
Encouraging agriculture is a wonderful thing. Let's, let's not get things conflated here.
And then they could go into a lot of other things. I feel like tonight, with this application, I think this is a really appropriate use for the land and what they're doing, and this, I feel, is separate from this other conversation that we need to have, which is, does not apply, I feel, to you guys at all.
No, I didn't mean to imply that it did, but it is something that we sort of touch on often, but have yet to put to rest, and, and we really do need to get a hold on this.
I agree. It could apply to you if you come back with amusement rides and things like that, or bike ride use of your wine.
Right. Poker bands, whatever else is a customary use.
He shouldn't give you any more ideas.
But, but no, that's precisely, I mean, that's why I changed my vote on this, because I think this, this, in our case, works. We have standards in our zoning ordinance, and they had to run the gauntlet, whereas other customary uses are just happening, and you have to work pretty hard to even see how certain of those uses related all to whatever agricultural activity is going on, so.
Mr. Woodson, when the planning commission takes this up, if, if the timing is not during general assembly, because my friend that happens to be kind of the ABC expert in the state is also a lobbyist, so he could probably come up if it's not during general assembly and actually meet and answer.
Well, the other thing that sticks with a lot of people is, you know, these properties enjoy special tax rate because they're in agriculture. If you're allowing people to camp on it, is it still in agriculture? If you're having events on it, is it still in agriculture? It really begs a lot of questions that we don't really have time to dig into tonight, but I think we, as a county, really need to get a hold on it.
The good news in your case for us is that you are paying a transient occupancy tax, so we're at least gaining revenue from that year, this particular year, so. All right, you better run while you're ahead.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And we pay the full tax rate on all of our non-living use property.
Yeah.
But our property, as you saw, we have vines and...
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good night.
One item...
One item wasn't clear to me earlier, and it didn't help, was whether the items from the day session would be before or after public comment. I did, I think it was clarified to be after public hearings.
Yep.
Well, after public comment is also after public hearings. So I think you can probably handle it any way you wish.
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and do public comment.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That means I'm opening public comment period for the evening. Anybody wishing to speak, please come up and let us know your name and which district you're in.
See, Hank, we knew you were ready to talk.
My name's Henry Goffine. I live in Hampton District and now in the town of Washington. I used to live in Harris Hollow. I was interested in the winery thing, because as you know, I used to not have a winery, but did grow grapes. I had a vineyard. First, I'd like to congratulate you on being elected. And I'd like to congratulate you on being re-elected. See, I'm partisan. I'm not partisan. I'm sharing the wealth. I just wanted to anecdotally, well, this is not anecdotally, when you were talking about the farm winery. I don't know if you remember the ill-fated Oasis Vineyards. What happened with it running amok and becoming more of a party thing than actually. What happened was that was built as a farm winery. But farm winery buildings are not inspected or have to be built to code. So when they started to have all these parties, the Board of Supervisors in Farquhar County said, no, because they would know simple things like ramps, wheelchair access. The bathrooms weren't big enough, stuff like that. And all the bleachers and all of that stuff was built not to, it may have been built to code, but it was never, you know. So that's, I think, one safeguard you guys have against something escalating into something that, that, that you, you, you don't want. I was, I also, I've lived here 46 years. And I was sort of, again, listening to the gentlemen that were talking about the jail. And that first one gentleman said, two chimneys. And then he was corrected by someone up here and said, four chimneys. Well, what I don't understand, and this is a pet peeve of mine, is that building, two of those chimneys were only built 30 years ago. You may not know it, the jail was totally renovated 30 to 35 years ago. And the existing chimneys were taken down. Something was added to the building. And new chimneys were put up so it would look exactly like, sort of like the old building.
There are six chimneys now.
Okay. I remember, I remember the argument over, there was really quite a to-do about knocking down the chimneys and all that. But what I'm trying to get at is that I've lived here so long. And I've just went to a school board meeting and they had in there, and I don't know if it was from last year or this year, sixty, over $60,000 to repair the roof over the gymnasium in the elementary school. I've lived, that's the third time in 28 years that you've repaired the same roof for that kind of money. When, and what I'm trying to get at is, what I see happening here a lot, expedience and worrying about the tax dollar or what might go up, it's not jobs that are done on the cheap. If it had put a slanted roof on it, like when they had done the entire elementary school, you wouldn't have had this probably, which saved $120,000. It's the same thing with the compactors. Everybody's so happy with saving too. That was supposed to be original, part of the original job. And it was thrown out because it costs money. So I want you really to think about when, when, when you start doing all these renovations and all this kind of stuff, that it's not done on the cheap. Now, also, some personal points of view is that I would really personally hate to see a new courthouse. I would rather see it build off the back. Building's been here, it's part of what somebody explained the campus. The buildings left and right, they've been doubled in size. They were built just to look just like. It was, it was only one building in, then they put a breezeway and second building. So you, to keep the ambiance of what this town is supposed to be about. And it would bother me, this is the county seat, every other county has its courthouse in the county seat. Not outside on the road, not down the block, not somewhere else, in, in, in the town. And I think you could probably do something nicer with this building for a hell of a lot less money than $6 to $8 million. You know, by adding addition or whatnot. I also think the jail, which is no longer used for anything, since the powers that be said you had to invest in the county, countywide jails. It seems to me that they could put a lockup in that existing office that they built there, the one that runs parallel to, to Gay Street, and use that building for something. Picks it up. It's already there. And it's part of the fabric of this town. And then that's why I, I worry about, it just seems like we now have your offices out of the town. They should be in the town. That's what the supervisor should be. You know, so I, I just wish when you consider spending money, that you also consider spending it so we don't have to over and over and over again do the same jobs. And you know, and 35 years after a building is built, the chimneys are falling down while you go out here. Chimneys are built hundreds of years ago, still standing up. So, you know, I just wish, you know, that we take the financial end of it into consideration and make sure the job is done completely and done well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one in the courtroom? Anyone on, I'm sorry? Any, anyone on Zoom wishing to speak? Not seeing any hands. I'm gonna close the public comment period. And at this time, I believe we go into information reports and correspondence. Board committee reports. Does anybody meet?
Building committee met. You all heard our report earlier today, and we look forward to discussing this further with you and getting feedback to help us chart our course for the new year. RSK RFA met as scheduled in December. We had a robust meeting at the library. We continue to grapple with something that I think this board, I would personally appreciate feedback from other board members. I think you all know, last year, we had some difficulties with the dark skies program at the park. And so there seems to be an ongoing discussion at the authority as to how to foster relationships with our volunteers. I am of the mind that I would prefer to develop a relationship with organizations and let the organizations manage our volunteers for programs that are approved by the authority. Some members of the authority would prefer that the authority approve volunteers, which I think is a very slippery slope, and it doesn't allow us to have supervised volunteers. I think our volunteers should be supervised. It's something that's an ongoing discussion on the authority, and your feedback or support for the authority would be greatly appreciated. Public safety committee did not meet. Rules committee did not meet.
Thank you. Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, we, we heard a second time, an application for a special exception permit for a dog training facility. It's a property that's adjacent to the west of Narmada, and it seems to be a much better received application vis a vis the location than the initial application, which put it down off Forest Grove and Richmond Road. So like we did the first time around with the other proposed location, we scheduled a public hearing. The Thornhill family had a tourist home application that was very well presented and that was moved on to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And we have a sign ordinance in draft form, and we're meeting next Wednesday at five. Well, anyway, we're meeting next Wednesday.
That's on board docs.
Will be. And that, that's a work session really to, to get through the, the sign ordinance. But Mr. Curry and Mr. Goff put a lot of effort into that. And then I mentioned earlier, the Berkeley Group work, which should commence shortly. It'll be, as, as I noted, a high-level diagnostic of both the zoning and subdivision ordinances. And then we've been talking for a while about clean up all the disparate event stuff. Hopefully, we can, the planning commission members were adamant that we try to wrap up the sign ordinance without involving the Berkeley Group if possible, and I think we can do that. And I, anyway, I'm looking forward to the Berkeley Group commencing that work. And we'll, hopefully, as, as you noted earlier, we will have a full plate because we'll have a lot of stuff to.
It's tough to make a dent in that list.
I know. So, but I think we're, it's, we're there. So we'll start knocking things out. That's it.
Glad you have the Berkeley Group involved. Fire levy board did not meet, but they should be, I think, in February.
They'll be meeting January and February, organizational meeting, and then their regular first half meeting. Maybe February, February, but.
I haven't seen anything date-wise for January, so. All right. Treasurer's report, do you want to go over any sales taxes, like crazy?
Yeah, I mean, sales taxes very high. There was one of the items in the legislative platform discussions, grocery tax. So if the General Assembly and Governor decided to eliminate the grocery tax and not backfill revenue, some fraction of this revenue would disappear, and that fraction would be equivalent to the percent of dollars spent on groceries. And what is that in Rappahannock County? It's probably pretty small because we don't have a grocery store compared to all expenditures. Now, for the schools, there's another 1% not represented in this. Theirs is a little easier to calculate based on state averages, but the current budget bills do include some methods to backfill that. So stay tuned. That'll be a active discussion going forward. So any rate, first month ever exceeding $100,000 for sales tax.
Okay. So I've got a question in the context of the reassessments and the likelihood that we'll lower the tax rate as part of an equalization exercise. To what extent can we, in that discussion, look outside of the property tax revenue bucket at our other tax revenue sources, sales tax revenue, meals and lodging tax revenue? If this is the new normal, and to use the word equalization again in a different context, I mean, if our total tax revenue, including sales and meals and lodging tax, can be more supported by non-property tax revenue, can we make any downward adjustment to our property taxes to end up with the same total revenue amount?
That, that certainly is always an opportunity for the board to adjust the tax, real estate tax rate or personal property tax rate, however you'd like. And normally, the way I approach the budget is, well, you identify the needs, expenditure needs. If the General Assembly moves through with some of their initiatives, like the 5% increase on the salary increase for teachers and comp board funded positions, et cetera, that's going to put considerable pressure. And so all of that has to come together. And then at the end of the day, the last thing that should be done is to identify, how do you allocate that, distribute that revenue generation to the need? And you can look at those different buckets and, and adjust them if you think it's appropriate.
You know, I think.
And then you can re-establish what needs are.
I think our, I think our citizens, to some extent, deserve to be rewarded for tourism activity that sometimes works against them. And I mean, to the extent we're approving more and more tourist-related activities that could lead to adverse effects on the people who actually live here, if we can reduce the tax burden on our citizens because of the benefit we're receiving from people who come, spend, and then go, I'm all for it. So I just hope that as we enter our budget review season, that we all think about revenue in a broader sense to include not only real property tax revenue and personal property tax revenue, but think about what seems to be a new normal with regard to sales and meals and lodging tax revenue, and that we, we take all of that into account when we make a final decision on our tax rate.
So we raised the lodging tax last year, and then there's another percentage that the stipulation applies, that it can only be used for tourism purposes, if I remember correctly. It's like another 2%.
The 2%, that's right.
So we, we raised that. Raising it two, another 2% would just generate an additional $40,000 for tourism-related.
That was our estimate, and we can go back now and try to see.
Probably have exceeded that, if I had to guess.
Might.
My only caution on the sales tax is people are still stuck at home, a lot of people.
Right.
And are still using Amazon pretty heavily. And will that continue? It may.
Yeah, I just hope we think about it.
Yep.
Because we have an opportunity to, I mean, obviously, people are concerned with these reassessments. And, and we talked about how those reassessments came in a really odd time in the market. And so as we adjust the tax rates so that we're not generating additional revenue on the backs of our citizens that we might not need, I just want to make sure that we're looking beyond real property tax revenue and looking, looking at all the pieces to the revenue puzzle to make a good decision. And I mean, in my view, maybe, maybe after taking into account possible teacher salary increases or public, public employee salary increases mandated by the state, and then also hedging against a potential post-COVID downturn in sales tax revenue, we, I think we still could end up in a position where we reduce the, the real property tax burden on our citizens. So at least let's look at it.
Absolutely.
And I, I guess I'll try to finish that thought with, if the board as a body wants me and my proposed budget to take a certain tact relative to these different revenue sources, I'll need that direction. Otherwise, I'll be using my best judgment of doing what you're doing. Looking at all the revenue, figuring out what I think is reasonable to anticipate and forecast for sales tax going forward, while not being, you know, having too big eyes and thinking that it's going to happen when it doesn't. If we can, if I can justify a reduced real estate tax rate less than the equalized rate, then, you know, I'll do that. But if there's, if there's any other direction you want to provide me in my proposed budget, I'll need to know that before I get into those weeds.
That's all I was saying, is we, we should at least consider the possibility of a real property tax rate below the equalized rate, given, given the trend here on, on sales and meals and lodging tax revenue. It only makes sense, and I think it's one way that we can look our citizens in, in their collective eye and say, hey, we know that tourism is not necessarily great for everyone who lives here, but here's one way. who lives here, but here's one way that we can pay you back.
All right. Anything else under the Treasurers' Report? Should I?
No, everything else is looking pretty good.
Our cash position is truly incredible.
It does include your ARPA money and very high collection rates right now in real estate and personal property. That also bakes into that cash position.
All right. Takes us to matters presented by the Board.
Madam Chair, I think most of us received a message from a citizen regarding this ongoing issue with wrong-way driving on 211. And Mr. Frazier made a good point. He said, you know, a lot of that could be tied to the proliferation of wineries. And while I think that might be part of it, I had my own encounter some time ago, eight in the morning on a Tuesday, over near Battle Mountain Road, where someone, unfortunately, was in the right lane going east, and someone came in the left lane going west. And they moved too quickly for me to even put an eye on who they were, in what condition they might have been. But I think it is, there's something odd with, I don't know if it's signage or what, but I just, I believe Mr. Nesbit will be here in February, and I would ask that we put that maybe as an agenda item for discussion. I feel like there's, I mean, I drove to Sperryville to grab something to eat tonight, and I feel like there's so much sign clutter, I wonder to what extent that desensitizes motorists to what matters. And that's just one observation. I don't know what we can do to stop this, but it is terrible. I mean, I told my wife, don't ever drive in the left lane on 211 unless you're specifically passing someone and you can see ahead, because it happens all too often. But I just want to make sure that we consider what we can do with VDOT to mitigate this ongoing problem.
That area of 211 really seems to be, for some reason, the trouble area. I had a friend that, again, very early in the morning, had someone coming down her, on her side of the road, and the only reason she survived was she could get over the median, because it was a big 18-wheeler and her car and the oncoming car, and she had to get over. And that was like at 6:00 in the morning. And then I had a situation years ago, because I wrote Mr. McCarthy, and I said, there needs to be a sign at Narmada that tells people to go, because I just had somebody coming straight at me, and he goes, there is a sign. And I went, and I drove down there, and I looked, and it's plain as day, right, when you pull out of Narmada?
Yeah.
You know? And so, I don't know, it just seems from, like, Narmada to the down, seems to be a very weird stretch.
I think it stretches where you can only see the half of the roadway that's in front of you, that the other side of the road is obscured. It just doesn't register with people that they have to, you know, make an effort to go back and be where they need to be. I think the right thing to do is to ask VDOT for recommendations. I think this is truly, you know, a traffic engineering issue, and we really need their expertise for recommendations. I do, I do agree that part of the problem is we're asking for more visuals when, like you said, there's already so much visual clutter, and we really try to avoid that, but we're there. And most of them are VDOT signs.
Yeah, the problem with Narmada, they had asked for a cut over at that particular spot, but the problem is the elevation difference between the two lanes, it's almost impossibility.
Good to know, but yeah, next month, VDOT. Ms. Smith?
Well, we had that. I know we all saw that. The other thing that I didn't mention during the December meeting, during this year's election, I just, we need to make sure that when folks are voting, that we don't have any kind of construction going on in that area where the registrar's office is, because there was construction going on in this side of the courthouse, and there was a lot of wires and all kinds of stuff going on as people were trying to access the registrar's office to vote, and also a lot of noise and not really conducive to voting. We had it similarly a few years ago, when the ramp was put in at the back of the building that also somewhat hampered folks' ability to access the registrar's office. So, I just think we need to be really cognizant of any sort of construction activity during times when people will be voting.
That was the painting project, and we did have to counsel the contractor a couple of times.
Yeah. So, we just need to really be on the lookout for that going forward. It seemed like there was something else, somebody else to take a turn, and I'm sure it'll come to me.
Mr. Carney, welcome to your first meeting. Have anything for us?
Are you coming back to the next meeting?
I'll be here. I would like to sort of reiterate what Ms. Smith thought of earlier. What Ms. Smith and Mr. Whitson were talking about earlier, I think that it would be wise of us to revisit our county ordinance as it reflects the state ordinances apropos farm breweries, farm wineries, and don't forget farm distilleries. And I think that, you know, in the next 10 and 20 years, we're really going to be looking at a lot, because it's by right. And so, I think it's, the time is now. So, I'd love to wholeheartedly kind of jump into that, and I have a little bit of experience with it, having one.
Yeah, thank you. We're glad to have your expertise.
Mr. Frazier?
Muted right now.
I'll go while he's...
There I am.
There you go. Yes, sir.
Anybody, anyone else wants to go first? They can, but I do have a minute or two here I'd like to take.
Go right ahead, I'm the only one last.
Appreciate Mr. Whitson bringing up the thing about the wrong-way drivers and the proliferation of the wineries and breweries. Narmada is a problem. I had a lady time that she went by there the other day, and there was a man out there using a wild wander as the, you know, as his bathroom facility, right there on the side of 211. And that wasn't at night. That was during the day. So, you know, it's a problem, and it didn't used to happen. Anyway, if I could, I've written up something I'm going to present to the Board right now, and I'm also going to see if I can present it as a letter to the editor as well, just my viewpoint on a particular matter, and that is the one of broadband. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, on Monday, 6th December, 2021, during the regular Board Supervisors' meeting, there were two speakers during public comment who spoke about the loss of their CenturyLink phone landline service. One citizen stated their line had been cut two months, and she was very worried about not being able to call 911. This is a very serious problem here. This is an immediate problem. Later, the Board discussed the fact that two supervisors, Donna B. and Whitson, and the County Administrator, Gary Curry, were on a conference call with CenturyLink, and were informed that CenturyLink was in the process of selling off the local lines and customer base to Bright Speed Incorporated. This discussion ended with Rappahannock County keeping pressure on CenturyLink by contacting the SCC, which apparently doesn't have any effect on CenturyLink. Rappahannock County has tied their own hands now in two ways. First, they voted to agree to not work with any wireless providers, and secondly, committed over $1 million in funds for a project with an estimated build out of three years. With two problems articulated by the supervisors, one, immediate loss of landlines for 911; two, lack of internet service for schoolchildren. And the supervisors answer, invest all the funds in a three-year program and agree to not do anything for wireless communications for three years. What this means is there will be three years of students, elementary through graduation, with the very same internet they currently have, and hope no one on CenturyLink needs to call 911 for the next three years. This is the best-case scenario that they have voted to work on. There is no Plan B. If, for whatever reason, this regional initiative falls apart come March 2022, Rappahannock County will essentially done nothing to move forward on broadband for the last two years. Here we now have at the January 22, 2022 meeting, a meeting rescheduled, excuse me, rescheduled from 3/1, where a snowstorm of approximately 6 to 12 inches essentially shut down the area. Over 50 miles of backups on Interstate 95 and 24-plus hours where motorists were stuck in their vehicles. Closer to home, here in Rappahannock, many residents are without power, many with loss of landline phone service, that's Verizon this time, and no access to cell. The no access to cell exists in those areas on bright sunshiny days, and the storm simply highlighted the issue. The Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors and the broadband authority is seriously considering a course of action to spend $13 million as their obligation of a project that will take up to three years to complete. And yes, $13 million that after completion will not address the fact that had you or loved one skidded off the road and became stranded in an area not currently served by cell service, you or they would be no better off, not on 231, not on 522 in Woodville, nor at Rock Mills on a beautiful day. Then think about the difficulties during an after-storm scenario like we had this week, where after a midsummer thunderstorm, the trees taking line, taking out lines. No power, no phones, and then no fiber to the home, because the fiber to the home will run on the same poles as REC. On Monday, 3/1, 2022, a snowstorm of approximately seven hours in parts of the county was reverted to circa 1910. No phones or electricity. I urge my colleagues to step back and take a look at a system of broadband that will ensure Rappahannock citizens have a system that is more than adequate for business and educational needs, and pardon up-to-be in service during many storm incidents that we have actually experienced. Mr. Carr, All Points Broadband used as a selling point the ability of watching Netflix on 12 devices at the same time while downloading and uploading files to worker schools from each resident served. This is a perfect condition with perfect weather scenario. What happens when the trees take the lines down, or when your loved one is stranded in a vehicle with no cell on a sunshiny day? Also, if you will, visualize, if you can, the look of the trees cut back 100 foot wide through the countryside to ensure trees do not interrupt your Netflix viewing, or the butchered appearance of those trees with the lines passed through them. Stop and think for a few moments. The width of the right-of-way for the Virginia Dominion transmission lines is clear-cut to guarantee no falling tree disruptions, and that's approximately 250 foot wide to Rappahannock County right now. Going forward, does All Points Broadband will both forever change the appearance of Rappahannock County while not addressing the deficiencies of our vulnerable 911 system? Please slow down and consider all options. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. And the one thing that I wanted to talk about and see if there's any issues or concerns, I would like to get a little bit more involved with the Virginia Rural Center Caucus. I just, in my mind, think, people think of people in Richmond, think of Rappahannock County as 7,300 people, and I think the Rural Caucus and the counties that participate in it will give us more weight, should we need weight. And we may not need it today, but who knows what's coming down the pike. So, if the Board, my peers do not have a problem with it, I am, there's a meeting in Richmond on the Rural Caucus, February 2nd, that I am going to plan on attending, unless there's any issues.
I think it's great. I've been looking at that organization and some of the VACO information that we've received, and wondered exactly what their talking points were. I've reviewed some of the materials associated with them, and they seem to focus on preserving the rural nature of the counties that are involved, but also fostering economic development appropriate to those localities. So, that would be an interesting mix. And as always with anything, you know, VACO or association-related, you might not learn what you need to learn in the course of the meeting, but you might not, you might learn it from someone else who's attending.
Absolutely.
So, it would be interesting to form some relationships, and I'd be curious to hear more about the organization. There's not, it's hard to get a grip on exactly where they're coming from. So, I think it's worth exploring.
Yeah, thanks for that initiative, and if I'm available, then I'd be interested in attending, just, I don't know if more than one person can go.
I would think.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for, you're good about finding ways besides our county to try to leverage other resources, so thank you for that.
And I know Van met Christie at the meeting in Norfolk, the executive director. So, I think they're just getting kind of going again, post-COVID, and I think it's a good time to get engaged.
I wondered if that meeting would go virtual with everything going on?
Don't know. So far, I haven't heard anything, but the new governor may not.
Well, and that takes me back to one thing that I did mention last month, which I did want to touch on again. I know we had sent letters to a lot of our state representatives and leaders regarding the telecommunications challenges we've had throughout the county, with some of those regimes changing. I wonder if it makes sense to send letters to bring folks up to speed on the challenges we've been encountering and see if maybe people wouldn't be more interested in engaging and helping us with those challenges. In addition to the SCC letters that we send, I wasn't sure if anyone had contacted FCC for federal implications, especially regarding 911 service, that may be something we can look at.
I know Lieutenant Jenkins did contact the company that does the, what's it called? When somebody has a problem, I fall and I can't get up, kind of thing.
Lifeline.
Lifeline or whatever. She did reach out, and it sounded like we may have a friend on that side as well. And then Mr. Whitson and I have a call, I think, on the 13th with a supervisor to determine what county that was.
It's...
Vata Top?
No, is it Buchanan?
Buchanan?
Buchanan? Is that a county? I think that's where it is.
Yeah, I think so.
What are the Bs?
Because they are obviously...
For New Yorkers, you spell Virginia, speak Virginia.
The more the merrier, I think, on this, if we can...
Yeah. Speaking of letters, I did chat with Mr. Bolster just before our evening session, and he suggested that we, as a courtesy, extend just a quick note of gratitude to our counterparts in Fauquier and Culpeper County for their stepping up and helping out during this snow event. So, I think, I think we ought to do that, and Ms. Tony, I can work with you on that if you wish.
I think that's a great idea.
Just a quick note of thanks. Could even be handwritten.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, very good idea.
It's nice that we've got these relationships being built, rebuilt. All right. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn. I'll second Mr. Carney's motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Parrish got us out of them, and now they...
I was the one who... You've just brought yourself back in, so...